Call the October twentieth Planning Commission meeting to order. By way of roll call, we have Mr. Klick, for Mr. Shimani, Ms. Jenkins, and Mr. Weisorik are here. They are present. Mr. Spiker is not present yet, but I do anticipate him to join us. With that, we do have a quorum of members. Next up on the agenda would be approval of the September fifteenth, twenty twenty, meeting minutes of the City Planning Commission. All of the members have had a chance to review the minutes previously sent out. And I see Mr. Spiker has joined us as well. Are there any questions or comments on the September meeting minutes? I don't have hearing on. Do we have a motion to approve? Do we have a first? Do we have a second? We have a first, a second, all of them signify by saying aye. Thank you. Next up on the agenda, we have, this is per resolution, City Council, Plan Commission is going to begin their review and recommend guidelines for possible short-term rental regulations. As it's stated on the agenda, you know, that that might be more of an indication that, you know, we're ready to take action on some unproposed guidelines. And this is really just the beginning of the conversation. So we don't have anything prepared that the Plan Commission is being asked to take action on today, just to make that clear for those, for the other attendees here today. What we've prepared at this point is essentially some talking points for the Planning Commission to review, to kind of get the discussion rolling on basically the various aspects of of short-term rentals. And basically what we would need to do, what the Planning Commission would need to do in order to craft some proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance, to number one, define the use and then indicate where that use would be permitted in the city and identify or determine what kinds of conditions might need to be set for that use in any particular zoning district in the city of Erie. So with that, I kind of was just going to open it up to the floor. By way of background, I mean, the Plan Commissioners, Plan Commission members have had a chance to review the information that was submitted, that's kind of that basic outline of, you know, what are we talking about? You know, why do we need? Why do we need to do an ordinance, or why do we need to amend the city's zoning ordinance to accommodate short-term rentals? That's basically coming from the Supreme, the PA Supreme Court decision that was the slice of life decision that if if many of you that have been involved in short-term rentals were are probably aware of this court case that essentially kind of set a new, a different precedent for how short-term rentals are being treated and recognized by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. And so essentially, it's their decision has said that for any property that's being used solely or purely for short-term residential rentals doesn't meet their criteria of a dwelling. So in other words, the State Supreme Court says, we think that if you're just using a property for short-term rentals use, it's not really being used as a dwelling. So in other words, in residential districts where your most typical permitted use is single-family dwelling or two-unit or multiple-family dwellings, they're saying that this use is something else now. And that if municipalities haven't already specifically or explicitly permitted that use in any zoning district, it's by default not permitted anywhere in that municipality. So that has forced about twenty-five-hundred and some municipalities across Pennsylvania to look at their ordinances and determine what their next steps need to be in order to account for this use that that has now kind of been pulled out and recognized as a separate use that needs to be accounted for by the municipalities in Pennsylvania. So that's really kind of the background of it, of why the city has been looking at it kind of informally and and is now proceeding to look at it more formally.
Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Just to bring up one aspect to kind of piggyback on what Jake has said. I guess for clarification, is this the sort of precedent that has been set? Is that essentially, i- it only applies to R1? Is that correct?
That's correct. No, no, it's it's not. It's, it really applies anywhere throughout the municipality. Because what they're saying is, the Supreme Court is saying that if you're in a zoning district where the permitted uses are dwellings, like an R1 district, but there are other residential districts as well, and and across Pennsylvania, there are many different designations of residential districts. There's no real universal R1 across the board throughout the Commonwealth. So really what they were they were implying is that if you're in a residential district, any residential district, if it, if you don't have that use accommodated, then they're saying it shouldn't be permitted. That's, that's what they're saying. So it's not really specific to R1, per se.
Just to just to be a little nitpicky about the choice of words, I think it's that, I mean, of course, I'm involved with Airbnb, so my interpretation of it is there is no ordinance or words that allow it. They're not saying it should not be allowed. They're saying that based on how things are set up now, we don't have verbiage or ordinances that allow Airbnb, short-term rentals, et cetera, because it is a new thing. And you know, once, a couple of statements I would like to make, being the youngest, maybe the youngest person on this panel is, I really hope that Erie and the people that make important decisions about the future of Erie can recognize that we should not repeat the mistakes of the past and that we should be looking at a future that brings more tourism to Erie, because that is going to strengthen our economy. That is one of the strengths of Airbnb and short-term rentals. But the question becomes, how do we do that in a way that everyone feels is fair? I don't think people will argue the fact that tourism is good for our economy. That's why everyone supports the casino. It brings people in from other areas to bring money to our economy.
May I be heard here?
Yeah.
Because I don't know where you have this idea, I'm talking to Jake specifically, is that, you know, I have actually litigated the case using the slice of life. Slice of Life did not say that Airbnbs are not permitted in the city. They said they're not permitted in single-family dwelling areas, which we designate as R1. That's the only place where you cannot have an Airbnb. You can have it in any other area as long as it's not R1 zoning. So that is a mistake. And it has nothing to do with blowing, that's definition of single. If you want me to quote from from Slice of Life, I will do that.
That's, and that's fine, sir. That's, that's fine. And I I know that the the case that was considered here in Erie by the County Court, a comma, please, was more specifically related to a property in an R1 district. But yeah, I mean, you're generally correct, and it's not necessarily R1. Every municipality has different zoning districts that only allow single-family dwellings. So you're right, that's, this is applying to zoning districts where only single-family dwellings are permitted, which there are two in Erie, R1 and R1A, are both restricted to single-family dwellings only and don't accommodate multiple-family dwelling units in those two zoning districts. So it's really what the task at hand is, is to look at the use in general and then talk about which zoning districts it is going to be most appropriate to allow those short-term rentals to occur. So, and I think that's what the state has basically set forth, is if you don't have them regulated, defined, yet, then
It doesn't say that. It doesn't say that you have to pass any kind of ordinance or regulation. It says that they are considered the same as motels, hotels, and other transient uses. You cannot have a Airbnb in those type of areas.
What type of areas?
Planning Commission.
R1, right. Single-family dwelling. Making family dwelling. That is, that is what the case, that's what Slice of Life says.
Sure.
There is no, there is no, they're not saying that Airbnb should be outlawed or that you have to pass some sort of ordinance restricting areas of Airbnb, because they're saying they are not allowed in R1 zoning districts, and now is single-family districts, because they're not considered to be single-family dwellings. They're considered to be transient, like a motel, hotel, or such type of area. So you, you have to, the only thing that the Planning Commission can determine is whether is whether or not they want to ban them in other zoning districts other than R1. They're already banned in R1 because of the Supreme Court case.
One, one thing that I'll just throw in, just to kind of, in a, in a sense, actually support what you're saying there is, we recently purchased some properties that are in a zone that allows hotel-motel use. They are residential homes, but they are in a zone that allows hotel-motel use. So that's an interesting thing, and we're going to see how that unfolds. But I would assume that 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 means that we cannot be banned from doing short-term rental. Now, one thing I will add that is a counter to what you have said, sir, is that from my experience so far, two things seem to be true. One is that most Airbnbs are in residential neighborhoods. Whether we like it or not, the majority of them are. So turning that into a thing where we're, we're going to try to shut all these people down would be akin to wiping out the majority of short-term rentals. So we have to keep that in mind. These are incomes that people rely on. These are places that people rely on staying at to visit family, friends, and to work in Erie. There's a surprising number of people who come to Erie and stay at Airbnbs for work purposes. The other thing is that I think that single-family homes in these R1 districts has only been an issue when they are reported. And nine times out of ten, I don't know specifics, but in my experience so far, nine times out of ten, the homes or short-term rental places that are reported, it is because there is an HOA, not because it's just residential, it is because there is an HOA, meaning there's a group of people in that neighborhood that feels like they can make their voice heard, because that is the point of an HOA. So without an HOA, it's interesting, because I don't think that many of the single-family residential short-term rentals that are in Erie that are not in HOAs, I don't believe anyone knows where they are, and I don't believe they're being reported. I think the only issues that have come up have been because of HOAs.
That doesn't make any difference. It's the Supreme Court that made the decision, not anybody in general, not in HOA or anything. Supreme Court has come down with a decision, and the decision has to be obeyed. You cannot overrule the Supreme Court through a local ordinance. I'm sorry about that, but if that means people's income is going to be affected, well, that's the way it is. So it's, that's not anything anybody can do, because that's the law.
I'll have to ask my
It's just like any other law, you know, you may not, you may not agree with it, but you, you know, you, you gotta, you've got to deal with it.
Can be overturned and changed.
No, it cannot.
Hey, let me, let me interject for a second here, folks. The the legality of the Supreme Court case and whether or not that case specifically prohibits short-term rentals in an R1 district, that will be reviewed by the city solicitor. That determination will be made by the city solicitor as to whether there's specifically that that case specifically prohibits short-term rentals in an R1 district. We will have the solicitor review that and issue an opinion. I don't want the rest of the conversation about short-term rental use in the city of Erie to get sidetracked by that one issue. We're not going to determine that today. So let's, let's, I want this to be a full discussion on issues like this, but I don't want it to be dominated by the one thing that frankly, we are going to get the a legal opinion from our solicitor.
May I just ask a question? What, to you, Jake, sorry? What, what is it that you hope to have come out of this conversation? Is it some sort of consensus about short-term rentals? Is it talking about what, what it could look like allowing or not allowing? Because I just fear that this kind of conversation is going to be blocked, basically, at every turn by, by people who don't believe in it, you know? And I think that happens frequently. So I, I just want to try to clarify what we're here to try to talk about.
Well, ultimately, ultimately, City Council has charged the Planning Commission with looking at the, the topic, looking at the subject, recognizing that we currently do not have any regulations in place for short-term rentals. We have similar uses that are defined and regulated within the zoning ordinance, things like hotels, things like bed and breakfast, things like rooming houses. Those are all very similar uses, but again, are are basically considered distinct now, that this is a distinct use from those, though similar. So really what the Planning Commission's charge is, is to look at, look at the topic, look at the trends, try and look at what might be the best fit for Erie. And and City Council will ultimately need to determine based on the input that they receive from the Planning Commission and from the public when a public hearing is held, what their best course of action is. You know, the Planning Commission is just a recommending body to council. And obviously, there's public input and public comment as well. And that's, that's why this meeting here today is is essentially open to the public. Obviously, an odd venue with the, with the Zoom format these days, but you know, that's what municipalities have have kind of been relegated to to using at this point. My goals for today were certainly not to try and achieve a consensus right out of the gate. It's really kind of to get the issue out there and basically lay out what it is that we would potentially need to be doing. Number one, we need to establish a definition for that use. And there are several municipalities that have created their, you know, created a definition. And so ultimately, if we're talking about making recommendations on possible amendments to the ordinance, we've got to name the use and we've got to define the use. That's kind of step number one. And then getting into the physical logistics of it, then really start talking about what are the most appropriate zoning districts to allow that use to occur and whether it would be listed as simply a permitted use by right, as a special exception use, which actually is a process that's heard by the zoning hearing board, or whether it would be listed as a conditional use, which is a process that involves going in front of City Council for approval. So there's different, those are your three separate types of uses that are contained in any zoning ordinance in Pennsylvania. And that's, you know, kind of that next step of saying, we have the, the use named, we have it defined, we need to look at what zoning districts it's most appropriate to be located in. And then do we apply different conditions to that use depending on the zoning district that it's would potentially be located in? So that's a lot of work. It's a lot to consider and a lot to develop. And all the, you know, throughout that process, the City Solicitor's Office will be involved in making sure that we're not crossing any lines, that we're not doing anything or suggesting any amendments that would be contrary to any existing case law. So, you know, that's kind of the overall process. Before we get to a point where the Planning Commission, I think, would have all the information in front of them to actually make a recommendation to council.
So it's, it sounds like
And then council will go through its public process as well.
So it sounds like there could be, or that there is precedent for conditional or special approval in in certain neighborhoods? Like, i- if I heard you correctly, does it, is it true that there could be, you know, conditional approval in R1 neighborhoods? I know Theodore doesn't
I think there's any, any of those options could be on the table based on whether or not, you know, we're, we're going to have to look at that issue specifically and and see what our solicitor has to say about that, because certainly, I'm not going to suggest, I wouldn't suggest anything for the Planning Commission to consider if our solicitor has already ruled it out.
Sure.
So there, there are definitely, the framework needs to be looked at as to what's open for discussion and what's not. So that's something that I just don't have an answer for you today.
I, I just, here's why I ask, is because I have an Airbnb in a waterfront residential zone, and that does not include hotel-motel, so technically, it is not allowed, but there is no HOA, so I have not been reported. I would argue very strongly that a waterfront residential district should absolutely have verbiage or, you know, you know, the, the ability in some way to have short-term rental, specifically because it's just more interesting to people from out of town. Coming to stay and see the water is a very attractive thing. And if people are willing to pay a higher price to do so and stimulate our local economy in that way, I, I just, I feel like that's a great example of why and across the board, if the use is not already in the, 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 the zoning book, then we should know, we should not consider how to make that possible. I just think that's a very contrarian stance. Because we're looking at something that is just, it's, 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 we already have over two hundred Airbnb operators in Erie. Like I said, the vast majority are in R1, R1 areas. What are we going to do about that? Go after them? All of them?
Yeah. We can do others.
You know, what, what purpose does that serve? Is that, is that showing that Erie is a very welcoming city? Is that we are going to go after these people? I mean, we, Erie, the city of Erie is in no position right now to not welcome people that are here for business, people that are here for family events. What is the purpose of this?
First of all, it, it's because of the fact that if you have an R1 neighborhood, it's supposed, it, it, the Supreme Court has said you need to suppo- so to support that R1 neighborhood with single-family dwellings. It also affects the value of these, of these neighborhoods in that No, in a negative way, if you have
You have proof of that?
Yeah, the Supreme Court actually, in the Slice of Life case, stated that the, that the values go down. Plus, you know, you have, yeah, right.
I'm sorry, but there's no way. I, I've sold properties at, at above market, at, above market value because their, their use is for Airbnb and rentals. It's just, you know, you, you make, you, you're making a lot of very contrarian statements that really are just prohibiting any progress on this issue.
Well, the progress would be, if you want to deal with Airbnbs outside of R1, that is a progress issue. It's regressive to have mixed uses in a designated area like R1. That's why you have the zoning statute to begin with, is because they don't want to have mixed uses. That you're saying zoning back one hundred years.
The zoning is essentially set so that there's a rule about what you can and cannot build. It's not
It's use. That's what Supreme Court says. It's the use of the area, not, not what's built. Plus, we have enough hotels, motels, and et cetera, which are able to be utilized by, by people coming from out of town. I don't
Where, where, where in Erie would, in your mind, where would you allow short-term rental? What makes sense in your mind?
Anywhere than, anywhere than single-family residential zoning districts.
So downtown and Peach Street, that's it?
I'm not, I'm not limiting them to any district except for R1 or single-family districts.
I know, but that's I'm, that's That's nowhere in Erie except for downtown and Peach Street and maybe 12th Street. Everywhere else pretty much is R1, so
Well, that's true. Jake, in, in what residential zones it currently is transient accommodation permitted?
Hotels, motels, and the like.
We've got, sir, sir, with all due respect, try not to interrupt the other speakers, if you would. As far as transient, as far as transient lodging is concerned, you know, the other, the other examples of transient lodging would be hotels, motels, bed and breakfast, and rooming houses, essentially. And they're, they're permitted in, well, let's see.
I think it's only two.
You've got rooming houses and bed and breakfast. I, I don't have them broken out separately, and that's one of the things that, that we'll need to do is list the zoning districts by use. Our tables are set up a little different. Our use tables are set up by district and, and not by use. However, commercial zoning districts, for instance, C1, well, C2, C3, accommodate hotels, motels, C4 accommodates bed and breakfast.
I, I have a question, Jake. I'm, I'm sorry, I want to jump in. What about group homes? Are they avail, are they, is a group home able to be in an R1 district?
No. Yes, group, group homes, group, group homes are considered a single-family dwelling under the Americans for Disabilities Act, the Fair Housing Act. So yes, group homes are permitted in, in all of the residential districts where dwellings are permitted.
Thank you.
That's federal law, as far as I'm concerned.
Thank you.
Are, are there any? I'd like to get my question answered first.
Okay.
Right. Is, is there residential district in Erie where transient accommodations are permitted?
Um, yes, our three rooming houses are a special exception use. And rooming houses can be either transient or permanent. You know, the definition of transient in the city zoning ordinance says a resident or a, a person residing in Erie for less than thirty days. So that's, that's the, the difference between transient as permanent or permanent is whether somebody stays there for thirty days or less or more. But we do have rooming, you know, rooming houses, which again, can be considered transient lodging as well. Those are permitted in R3 as a special exception. They're permitted, they're permitted use in RLB, which is residential limited business, which is kind of our hybrid residential slash business zone. In R2, I was looking to see if that was considered Oh, I was looking to see if that was considered special exception. It is not.
I just wanted to say that in R two, R three and. R L B bed and breakfasts are also allowed, which are transient use.
Now that's.
Bed and breakfast is permitted in R two, yep.
Now, that's kind of back.
And R and R O B and R three. So we do have some transient uses predominantly bed and breakfast. That are permitted in those higher density residential districts.
Now I see an issue there just because this is a good example of um how. You kind of going back to my initial question about kind of the goal today is to name the use and define the use. Is it, is it, is it, is short term? Rental transient, A, is short term rental uh the same as bed and breakfast? I would argue that short term rental is none of those. That's because that's why we call it short term rental. It's not necessarily transient. I have short term rentals that stay on thirty day basis. Um that's not transient. They're often staying for more than thirty days. Um and even if it is thirty days, is that transient? Um I would argue, again, I would just repeat myself, I would argue that we have to have a separate term for this because otherwise it's like. The air, short term rentals is a new phenomenon. Um because before it was not possible without technology. Now that we have technology. Uh the way we do, it makes the service possible and it also makes it safer and that's why so many people do it. Um so you know, again, I would argue that that that. Means that it's something different and we cannot define it by other terms. It must be its own short term rental use. What does everyone think about that?
Can I make a statement?
Oh, I agree.
The, you know, the, we're talking about getting guidelines and establishing, as you said, the use, but. The slice of life is not the ultimate decision. It's up to the municipalities. Up to this commission and city council. So and that will override the slice of life. That is not, you know, the final word. And I think we're here to, where I'm here, to find out the input from the zoning office along with. The fact as and I I can't see everyone, so the the person that said that, you know, was young and knows that this is the direct. The inquiries for short term rentals are up a hundred and ten percent in Erie. I mean, people really want this. With COVID, the conditions for short term rentals are. Far better than the hotels and you're you have this very, very strong demand. I'm very sympathetic to those who wanna keep it the way it used to be, but the world is pushing in this direction. And they're putting it very, very cautious guidelines. And so I'm hopeful that the commission can't come up with a definition and. With strict guidelines, not something willy nilly.
This is that that's why I said, let's not repeat the mistakes of the past because Erie has a bad problem with. Standing in its own way and we have a unique opportunity to be redefining the future of Erie with all this investment going on downtown. That's partly why we're having this conversation, I would imagine, because we are doing a lot of planning. So I just think that to support Susan's point, we do need to do define this and we do need to take a stance. Of embracing this as as Erie, uh as a thing that Erie is known for rather. Um four million people visit Presque Isle every year and. You know, I just think we vastly underestimate what can be done if we actually. Have a a supportive stance of tourism.
Another important important thing here is that the inquiries coming to short term rentals. Want workspace with people working at home for an, you know, an indefinite amount of time. They want high internet. They want a safe environment. And most likely, these are people, these are our own people from Erie. These are our own families, our our kids, our grandkids. That say, wow, I I can go work in Erie for months at a time. I just want a safe environment. And you know, the city's already collecting fees from these Airbnbs. I mean, so they they really have guidelines and be legal.
Yeah, I mean, imagine the tax revenue we could have if we had five hundred Airbnbs instead of look getting rid of two hundred.
Well, and to your point, Ben, earlier, families are the vast majority. That stay in the Airbnbs. They don't want to cram in a hotel. And the families are what come to Erie in the summertime and bring in a huge amount of revenue. They want to stay in nice neighborhoods. They don't want to come to have parties and make havoc in these neighborhoods. They just want to be in a family friendly environment when they come to our city.
Yeah. They wanna feel, they wanna see what your area is about. That's the idea.
Well, to the point of whether or not slice of life controls, slice of life controls. And Mrs. Morris should know that because that's they've already said that her B and B operation is illegal. Uh the, there's, there's no, you can't overrule or legislate over a Supreme Court case. That's.
You most. And I mean, that's the idea of city council. The ci- the slice of life gave the. Opportunities twenty five municipalities. Who come up with an ordinance and that's why we're here.
There is nothing in that or in that case that says that municipality can do that. As a matter of fact, in my research. Uh most of the cases were zoning municipalities who filed suit against. People who run Airbnbs in their area. Was in the Poconos and uh the the zoning, the slice of life case. Prevails, that's it. That's the law in this area. You can run your B and B. In a another district where it's permitted uh if you want, but that's not, you can't.
Are we talking about B and B or?
All the language I read on slice of life kind of refers to the exclusivity of the use.
That's right.
How, how? Because if I'm a owner. So I went there last last weekend. Who's to debate me on that? Were I using exclusive as Airbnb or not? I just don't think that's. Imagine how you could cite anybody for that in the future.
And there would be a very easy workaround. Every Airbnb I own, I put an office in it.
That's that would that would be an exclusion too. You can't have a business in R one, single family district.
Personal storage.
That's that, that's not an R one house either. You have to have a single family. You can't do everything you want with your own property. That's why you have zoning laws. Zoning laws were created.
It's exclusive, it's exclusive use. How's to say what I'm doing behind my closed doors, not you, Theodore. You you have no idea what any any. Resident is doing in their house, whether or or letting somebody rent it out or not. How how would you ever, unless you're stalking them every minute of their day, how would you know where they put their head at night?
We know what Mrs. Morris is doing and we know what another uh individual in our neighborhood is doing. There are ways finding out, but.
You have a lot of free time on your hands to build a to out every person is doing where they're putting. It doesn't make any sense.
Takes a lot of effort to be a naysayer.
It's not a naysayer.
A lot of effort to take discourse with your neighbors. So what's more important is for for the commission to be able. To bring peace in these neighborhoods because you do have neighbors pitted against each other. You know, you don't wanna shut down the art teacher who's teaching children and you don't wanna touch, you know, shut down the piano lessons in your neighborhood. I mean, it can really get out of hand and it's it's not, it's not good. And we're, we know. Can you? Verify it, Jake? That can you verify that the fact is that if there, if you change the zoning, if you. Implement a zoning ordinance, that city council can approve that. And slice of life won't, is not, is not the final, final call. And of course, I go back to you would, obviously, the city solicitor would have the the word on that, but isn't that, do I have the understanding there?
Jake, before you answer that.
I'll double check. I'll double check with the solicitor's office on the authority of municipalities to. Uh I wouldn't say overturn the slice of life decision. I I don't think that's what would be happening necessarily, but. I'll I'll check on that issue and and I think Jason brings up a good issue as well. Part of what is in slice of life uh does talk about kind of the using a property solely as a. Short term rental property versus somebody who lives in their home, let's say fifty four. Or fifty weeks out of the year and then shares their home with somebody for two weeks. Does a house swap, something like that. Is that the same thing uh as uh, you know, solely using the property as a short term rental? I don't, I don't think so. So there are a lot of different nuances to the use of these properties. How much the property is used as a short term rental versus whether the property is owner occupied? Um there are properties that are owner occupied that rent a room, which is permitted. You're permitted to have up to two borders in a single family dwelling. Now, the the. Concept that's being argued about is the length of stay. Of those borders. So if a property owner who lives in their home, twelve months out of the year. If they rent a room to a transient person. Who stays there for less than thirty days, does that immediately mean the property is all is? Basically only being used as a short term rental? Those are the kind of things that need to be kind of worked out and they do involve. Uh legal opinions, you know, because you do have to weigh them against case law.
There is a case called Civic Zoning. Versus zoning board history of Stroud Township where the people u- utilize the property, but they only rented it out part time. And that was determined by the Supreme Court is illegal. There you also. Albert versus zoning board of North Amington also found that short term commercial rate. Vacation rental business was not a permitted use in an R one district. They, there are cases on on this, on these points.
I would.
And I don't know if you're aware of them.
I would say this, um Jake, Jake, um in looking at this issue and reading the case and going over it. Um a lot of language, a lot of the court's interpretation deals with the language of the ordinances. So when we take it to our solicitor, I think a large part of that is, uh obviously, the county has the right to create ordinances and amend ordinances as appropriate. So really, it's going to be. You know, amending our ordinance if you want to take up this issue, which it sounds like we will and we do. And it how we went toward our ordinances so as to be appropriate for the city of the area. Um and when you provide the case to our solicitor, um I'd be interested, once you get the opinion, to. Read exactly how they interpret it. I believe, once again, the ordinances are what the court hangs their hat on. And of course, if we reward our ordinances accordingly and appropriately. We should be able to accommodate um some of these issues or some of these rentals. So we'll wait and see what our solicitor has to say.
Makes sense.
And some of the things that you you should be looking at is there's the fallacy of moving. Being forward for, you know, just looking at it from the legal standpoint, but a lot of people think that it's not good for children. That, you know, then, you know, it's like Ozark, that the drug dealers down the street or, you know, there's weirdos in the house. There is nothing to substantiate that. That is all just, you know, made up. There, that, all those statistics. I mean, children are molested by people they know are in the neighborhood, not by Airbnb stayers or vacation stayers. And again, that's the strong demand of safety.
Yes. I would also just add to that, you know. I I I wonder what matters to the city? Is it, is it upholding a law that was created twenty, thirty years ago that had no idea? About what's going on today, or is it looking to the future to support its citizens?
This is a case that came down last year.
I wasn't really asking you, I was kind of aiming that at Jake. I know how you feel, but um.
Yeah, I mean, I. We've, um, I mean, the planning commission has a lot of, a lot of things to consider. It's pretty clear. That the use itself should be identified and defined as a distinct use. If if the city chooses to do that, um and and then. You have done that, once, once you've identified and defined the use, then. And it needs to be discussed and and recommended as to where to permit the use. It it is something that is, it it's there. It's been, it's been there. It's something that needs to be accommodated. That wasn't thought of twenty years ago when this ordinance was originally drafted.
Precise.
So I think that it's pretty fair to say that, uh, you know, it's time to take a good look at it and decide what. Is the best fit for Erie.
Thank you.
Uh and obviously, as I said before, we have to. Ever recommendations are made, we'll have to weigh that. Uh that'll have to pass a test.
Yeah.
Uh so our solicitor's office will be heavily involved in all of the language that gets moved for.
Because again, I just.
Uh but I think it's safe to say at this point, we'll have to, you know, come up with that term, whether it's short term rental or some other term. That other municipalities have used and a definition for that term that is essentially consistent with what we already have. We already have transient listed as someone that's there for less than thirty. Not to include transient uses. So we have that as a framework already in the existing ordinance that we can build off of. Um I am not, just as an administrative note, I don't know that the meeting has was scheduled to last longer than an hour. So I just wanted to kind of put everybody on notice. It's one forty eight. Uh and I do wanna have some constructive, I thank you for your input as far as the pros and cons that I've been hearing from the attendees. Um I do wanna give the planning commission members an opportunity to pose any. Questions or provide any, uh I guess directives for the zoning office to. Do more investigations and provide more information to them. So I wanna open the floor to the planning commission members.
Jake, my recommendation would be, of course, to get the opinion from the solicitor's office. I think one of the concerns in this meeting was. Whether the ordinances could be amended or adopted um or changed, you know, to accommodate these. I believe you can, but we will get that from our solicitor. So I would just like to see what they say on that issue.
That's where it's all has to.
Thank you.
That's the case and what that exactly means to all these, to where we then start defining it. Okay, yeah, that that's noted. The a couple of comments about the municipal authority is noted. I am gonna be talking with the solicitor on that. And I'll provide a report of that. Armand?
Yes, uh I I see that most of the waterfront area is not R one. You know, it's waterfront residential, everything is conditional. Uh so if it's not permitted in R one, there are plenty of places that I think if we come up with a proper uh. The proper use of what it, of what the conditions are. Are, you know, on a definition that I can go in most places except for R one. And I'd like to hear some of the other commission members, what what they think of that.
If I may, I just would love to add that. That uh if that were to happen, it would be great if we consider the hotspots of tourism, you know, for for where this is allowed. Because that is where people are are staying, you know, by the airport, by the casino, by. Presque Isle, by downtown. We have hotspots that I just think we need to keep in mind, you know, I I. I like where this is going, but I just fear that, you know, um that a decision could be made that that is still. Harmful to the Airbnb community.
Well, I'd like to hear from Mark or Rick or anybody who has anything. Without harming other people outside the commission coming in.
My take on it is, uh. I enjoy using Airbnb. These when I go out of town with my family. I have two young kids. Uh I would target if if I was not from Erie and I was looking to to book an Airbnb in Erie, I'd be targeting Frontier and Glenwood as places. I'd like to take my family to stay. Uh, I would target if, if I was not from Erie and I was looking to, to book an Airbnb in Erie, I'd be targeting Frontier and Glenwood as places I'd like to take my family to stay. I, I think that getting the experience of a citizen in their own city is, is a tremendous opportunity. Um, and I think it's, uh. An inevitable future, um, that, uh, I think our country is going to be seeing Airbnb's. Displaced a lot of hotel stays, uh, especially in the advent of, uh, coronavirus. Uh, very much like we've seen taxis disappear. So.
Brilliant.
That's my personal take.
Yeah, I, I, I too want to hear what the solicitor has to say, uh, about. What controls, whether the slice of life and other pieces, how they affect our thinking and, and ability to. Make recommendations or determinations to recommend to city council. You know, uh, it, it's. I guess, I get, I get that you like to use them. There are a lot of neighbor, neighbors of mine who would, um. Wouldn't be happy with an Airbnb next to them, whether it's families or whatever. They just don't like the transient nature of it. So I think that, that that's going to be the difficulty in sussing out. Where it ought to go and, and whether it's. Conditional use, uh, added to W R or. Other districts explicitly. We need a, a lot more information than I think we have.
Mark, uh, did you have any other additional comments, Mark? No, I don't. I, 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 I mean, like I said earlier, and, and a lot of us said, we need to start with the solicitor. So aware to go from there, uh, and how to make this happen. You know, whatever needs to happen. That, that, that we're, we're doing what's right for the city.
I think that you were asking, uh, what is right for the city? For the city to move forward? If any of you, if you could just. If you ever read the joy and the, and the comments. From staying in a neighborhood like Glenwood. The people have the most wonderful view of Erie and it's so welcoming. They've never caused any trouble, noise, complaint, nothing. They park on, in the driveway or in the garage. And it's just, I feel, because I was born and raised in Erie, that it brings joy to me. That when we do open this up and, you know, people want a safe neighborhood. Do we want people buying properties in Glenwood and Frontier? And turn it into, you know, Myrtle Beach? No, that's not going to happen. But to have a few homes, it's a wonderful, wonderful thing. And I'm very proud. When I get to host someone and they say how wonderful Erie is. So that's why I think it needs to go forward because I've witnessed and experienced.
I've, I have hundreds of handwritten reviews, uh, from people who, who have said things like. I can't believe how amazing Erie has been. Thank you for restaurant recommendations. We can't wait to come back. And stay here. Uh, these are words that I never would have thought would be coming out of someone's mouth about Erie. And I get them nearly.
Well, we've had, of course, people like Mrs. Morris and, uh. Uh, also, uh, Mr. Berlin in our neighborhood who are operating Airbnb's. We've had plenty of complaints. We've had complaints about parties. There was one party where people, where young people were drinking beer, carousing on the front lawn. Uh, urinating on the bushes, uh, Mrs. Morris.
I'd like to interrupt you, Mr. Ealy. That was not, I repeat, that was not. Our Airbnb. That was Airbnb across the street, which no longer exists. In four years, we have never had the police called. We have never had a neighbor come knock on our door and say. Your words are very untrue, sir.
And Berlin's had a party, uh, there's been a number of people who've caroused and have a party in this area. And as a matter of fact, Mrs. Moore had a party, a, a, a graduation party at her house.
If I, if I could interrupt everybody. Understood, but that's, we're not, we're not here to debate the neighborhood dispute.
I apologize. I apologize.
Well, motion in the second.
Second.
Limited to a few people anyways. You could never, you can, you can't say there aren't, there aren't going to be two Airbnb's in, in Glenwood because that would not be. Uh, proper ordinance to be struck down.
Well, we'll, we'll start again at our next.
Thank you for, thank you for considering.
Okay, thank you. Um, I know that we're, some of our video is getting kind of, or some of our audio is getting stepped on. Uh, with multiple people talking, but, uh, I think, uh. You know, we're, we're not making any motions on acting on any recommendations. We're still on the discussion point at this. At this juncture, as far as the, the short term rental discussion is concerned. Um, with that, uh, I think there was a motion to adjourn, uh, prior to the meeting getting shut off and being adjourned for us.
Well, thank you very much. Thank you, Jake.
All right. Thank you, everybody for attending. This will, uh, be continued.
Thank you.
Thank you, planning committee members.
Bye bye.